Cook.
Here.
Hopkins.
O'Nutt.
Here.
Richardson. Aaron Scott.
Here.
Bill Scott.
Here.
Womple.
Here.
Wormowski. Williams. Mayor Riser.
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Vee.
Here.
Harrison Alderman.
First off, we'll get these gentlemen out of here. We have with us tonight Danny Kendrick, Jimmy Duncan, and Mark Leahy. It's been a number of years you've done this, but they do an annual dice run at the lake, and the proceeds of that benefits the Lake of Jacksonville. And last year, the proceeds went to buying new trees out the lake. And this year, it's been identified by Brett Gilbreth, our lake superintendent, and Kelly Hall that we need again those proceeds to go to trees out the lake. So with that, Danny, do you have anything to say? We appreciate your donation. Jimmy and Mark?
Yeah. We want to thank the city for allowing us to do this, and it's a nice fundraiser. We are donating part of the money to the city, and then a proportion of it going to the Amets so that they can do a memorial on some things over there. I believe that's what it is.
Awesome.
So for the city, we got $2,250.
Oh, great.
For that's put on trees. And then for the Amets, we're donating $1,000 to them.
That's a lot of work to do. Thank you. Appreciate it.
It's not bad for about four hours on an afternoon on a Saturday afternoon.
We certainly appreciate it.
The memorial that Danny talked about is for the Iraq-Afghanistan wars. And it's going to be at the community park. If you're facing, if you're at the Korean Memorial or look to the south, there's a sidewalk that goes over there to the senior citizens place. And it's going to be around along there. The city is working with us very well to put that in. We haven't got a design back yet. We don't know exactly what the cost is going to be. We're guessing someplace between 40,000 and 50,000. Of this thousand, we've got almost 11,000 now. So we're getting there fully, but surely until we get the design, it's kind of hard to advertise too much when we are doing some. But we appreciate everything these guys have done, and the city's done. The city's been great to work with, so we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Goodie here.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Chairs. Jill, if you want, there's chairs over here if you want to sit. I mean, if you want to act. Second item that's not on the agenda that you've probably noticed in your packet, I don't know if Ron Hofstadter's going to be here this evening, but he's kept you abreast of the Perrin Hill situation and things, and he's really been working hard along with a lot of others out there. There is a letter that he would like for everyone to sign, Alderman to sign, about a pending Senate bill that would go to Governor Roner. If you feel apt to do that, I've got mine to turn in. I signed mine to turn in, and he's going to deliver these to the governor's office tomorrow. You know, that's all I have. If he was here, I'm sure Ron would share some more about it. But if you feel inclined to help and think we need, you know, affordable, the letter states it, so it's up to you. But if you do sign it, please get them back to me tonight so I can get them to Ron tomorrow. Outside of that, the first item on the agenda is, the merit report is a presentation of the Jacksonville Promise. And Dr. Sheehan, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much. Let me get this thing going. So approximately four years ago, I'm the president of the Jacksonville Promise Board, by the way, and I have been here four years ago to give you a formal presentation and ask for one set city home rule sales tax, which I didn't manage to convince everybody that that was important to pass. And so what has happened in the four years since is that the promise has started soliciting private funds. We incorporated as a not-for-profit corporation in January of 2015. And in the fall of 2015, we notified students that we were offering a Jacksonville Promise scholarship. And we, by the next June, we had raised in a year and a half $40,000, and we gave 17 scholarships of $2,000 apiece to matriculating college students. In the next year, we raised about $60,000, and we gave another $2,000 scholarship to 19 students. And this year, the starting class, we are going to give at least 33 scholarships. We are awarding 33 certificates tomorrow night at an annual award ceremony of $2,500 apiece, and I believe that there are going to be three additional students who are going to be starting this fall. One has not completed her application. One, we've gotten a notice that he probably is not happy elsewhere where he started college in Illinois. He's going to transfer back home to Illinois College. And a third one, we got an application last night, which we are perusing. So it's probably going to be 36 students this year. What I'm going to try to tell you, that I haven't been able to tell you in the past, and has really been an epiphany to me in the last two months, is that this year, this class of students represents an economic engine for Jacksonville. When I first presented the idea of a promise, it was predicated on what happened in Kalamazoo, and it was announced in Kalamazoo about 10 or 11 years ago as a full-fledged promise, where every student that went into school in Kalamazoo got tuition and fees paid at any public school in Michigan. And that prompted an immediate economic engine with people moving into Kalamazoo to take advantage of what was going to essentially be free college for their children and for their families. This works a little bit differently in Jacksonville, and it has really occurred to me that already this is generating money from the city coffers. And I want to explain to you how that is, why that is, and perhaps convince you that this is a good investment for the town. This slide here shows the logo that we had been going with in the lower right-hand corner for the last few years, and a new logo in the upper left-hand corner that was designed for us by Stephen Varble. That's now on our webpage. You can look up features about the promise on our webpage at JacksonvillePromise.org, and you can download applications there, and you can press a button and give us money there. So... I think that the city needs to focus on the fact that they need an economic engine. And this is sort of brought home in the last month and a half. We made the warning list about a month ago. We are now on a warning list, on a poverty report. At the back of the handout packet, the last couple of pages, is a report of the status of Morgan County, the Wellbeing Index, poverty and income, employment, education, et cetera. A few things caught my eye on that report. If you look at our high school graduation rate, we are, we have about twice the dropout rate that Illinois has on average for completion of high school. And for low-income families, again, we have about twice the rate of Illinois, with about one-third of all students that are low-income who enter high school will not finish. 65% finish, that's about two-thirds. And the other thing that caught my eye is that our child poverty rate is substantially higher than Illinois, and our median household income is about $13,000 below the average for Illinois. So I think these are all things that should catch the attention of the city council, and anything that we can do to create an economic engine that's going to strengthen the community and reduce poverty and improve academics should be something that we would pursue. So what is the promise? Is it a scholarship program? Is it an economic engine? It's both. One of our donors this year said to me, and I have adopted that as a catchphrase, that when you give to the promise, you're not only giving a gift to the students, you're giving a boost to the colleges, and you're giving an economic engine to the community. And I know I haven't proven that to you yet, but I'll get to some numbers here shortly. Maybe you could keep some handouts over there for other people who come in. They can follow along with the slides as I'm going through them. So the qualifications for a promise in Jacksonville are that you have to be accepted to college in a local college, Illinois College or McCorry College or Lincoln Land. You have to have attended school at least four years, at least the last four years in District 117. You have to have lived in District 117 during that period of time. You have to have maintained a GPA of C average in high school and filed a FAFSA form so that we know that you have applied for financial aid. We give the awards based on the schedule of how much time you've spent in Jacksonville. Ultimately, we would like to give an award that's equal to a Pell Grant, which is about $6,030, and we'd like to give it for all four years of college. We'd like to make it available to anybody who's finished high school in the last 10 years. Right now, we are limiting our awards to $2,500, and it is for one year, and it is to immediate graduates of high school. But hopefully you can help us expand our criteria. If you've gone to school K through 12 in Jacksonville and lived there, you'll get a 100% award. If you have gone only 9 through 12, you'll get a 60% award, and there's a 5% gradation for each grade in between. Schools can have attended, that the students could have attended, include JHS, Route, Westfair, ISB, and even homeschool that's certified will qualify you for Jacksonville Promise Scholarship. I've kind of gone through the history of our effort. We actually formed as just a committee under JREDC in the year 2010, and with a lot of study and a lot of attempts to try to figure out how to raise money, we finally, finally set forth and started raising money in 2015. So, and I reviewed with you the fact that we are giving a lot more scholarships this year. The slide that was made yesterday is already out of date. It says 32 scholarships, and I believe it's probably going to be up to 36 this year by the time all the applications and interest that we're aware of goes through. This probably should have been my title slide, Funding of the Promise. Right now, it is completely private. It's all donations from people and corporations around the community. We're very proud of the fact that in three years, we've gone from 80,000, or from 40,000 the first year up to 80,000 this last year. We've secured major grants from the Tracy Family Foundation and the Finley Family Foundation, and major awards from Jacksonville Savings Bank. So, but, but if I can prove to you that you give back more money in your coffers than you actually invest in funding a promise, I would hope that you can find your way to invest that money in the economic interests of Jacksonville and take over on a lot of the funding of the promise. So, so we were interested in why we ended up with 33 students this year. What lessons have we learned? We thought in the first year, at the end of the first year when we had 17 students, that even a full-fledged promise was going to only cost us about a quarter of our original predictions. When I came to you four years ago, I predicted that it was going to cost $1.3 million a year to fund a promise program in this community by the time that you got four years of rolling students in college. Four years of students with a class size of, well, I think our original predictions were predicated on having 60 to 70 students in college all at one time. And with 17 students applied the first year, it looked like our costs were going to be reduced. Now this year, we're up to 33 students, perhaps 36. But let's look into the numbers of what that means for Jacksonville. So we need to get some facts under our belt in order to try to figure out what that means. First of all, it's well documented that 80% of students that graduate from college are going to stay within 100 miles of that college when they start looking for jobs in their junior and senior year. It's more convenient to look locally. When they get summer jobs, it's convenient to get internships and so on with corporations that are local. And that turns out to mean that they stay within a discreet radius. 50% stay within the economic basin of the college. So 50% of our graduating class will stay here and contribute to the economic health of Jacksonville. What do starting college graduates make? Well, if I look at the national averages, we find that a starting salary is about $50,000. I don't know quite how to interpret that for Jacksonville. If you look at our average household income and see that it's $13,000 below the national average, and then we have to try to factor out the poverty because our college graduates are probably not going to be in the poverty sector, so we'll have to factor up how much below the average we are. But you could put in your own numbers for the starting salary, and let's just play with the starting salary a little bit. We know that the average of retirement age nationally is 67. At 45 years of employment at an annual salary increase of 3%, if you started at $50,000, you'd make $5.4 million in your career. That's if you didn't have any big promotions and big changes in salary over time. 52% of that you will spend on consumable goods and services that are subject to sales tax. That $2.8 million, which gets spent in the community, will actually get spent and respent seven times. You'll get your car fixed, the car repairman will buy groceries, the grocer will end up taking his laundry to the dry cleaners, and before that money has dissipated out of the community, it gets cycled and it gets re-taxed. Jacksonville gets about three cents out of every dollar in the form of a sales tax revenue. If you look on your budget for 2018, you'll see that $2 million was return of the home rule sales tax, and that $4 million was estate distribution of sales tax to Jacksonville. That's $6 million out of your budget. That represents three cents of the sales tax in Jacksonville. Jacksonville also gets another two cents in distribution, or another equivalent of two cents of sales tax. They get another $4 million in distribution of the state returning the amount of income tax that was paid in this area back to Jacksonville. So a total of $10 million gets returned to Jacksonville from salaries and from sales tax. So if you include, if you say that that $2.8 million gets spent seven times and taxed at 5%, then over the course of the lifetime, one graduate that stays in this area, $980,000 is going to be put into the city coffers because of that person living here and earning money and spending it here. So that's one way to look at an ROI. What does one graduate return to the city coffers over a lifetime? So this year, we have 14 more students than we had last year. We don't know how many students stayed in Jacksonville to go to school locally because of the promise. We did a survey, and we didn't have a huge response rate, but we certainly had probably a half a dozen of the students this year that responded, who said that, well, it wasn't a key factor for most of them, it was certainly an important factor in staying in Jacksonville. One student has attested that it was the icing on the cake and caused her to make the decision to stay in Jacksonville for sure over other choices that she had to leave. In talking to the, to a counselor at Route, he told me that when he looked at the numbers at Route for the last five years, on average, out of 30 students graduating, eight stayed locally to go to college. This year, 17 are staying locally to go to college. It went from 25% up to 56% of Route's graduating students are going to college locally this year. So, so let's assume that that 14 more students that we are giving promise scholarships to this year than last year or the year before is due to an influence of the promise on their decision-making, and that, and that, and that half of them will stay in our economic basin for the rest of their life. Seven of our students are going to stick with us, each contributing almost $1 million over their lifetime. That's our return on investment for this year's effect of the promise. We have one student that attested on Facebook that she's staying because of the promise. So, so it's a huge ROI, and it includes really the sales tax and the income tax, not population growth, or school census growth, or property values, or school income from government support, or any of the other things that the Kalamazoo Promise claimed would be the economic benefits of a, of a promise and the economic engine that would accrue. I'd like to look at it from another angle. So this year, there are going to be 14 students more than any prior year paying tuition to the three colleges. If you, I tried to look at the balance of who's going to IC and what the tuition is at IC, and I made the assumption that the full amount of tuition would be, would be spent for each student, even though IC on average gives about half of the tuition in the form of scholarships to each of their students. They still take that from their endowment and put that into their general fund in the form of tuition that's been gathered, and then spend that in support of the students and calculate that in their budget. The effect of the colleges spending that tuition each year, if they're going to spend $320,000 more this year because of the class increases, that's going to translate to $67,200 in income to the city in additional sales tax revenue in the coffers over the course of the next year. I mentioned that to a patient this morning. I like to give the speech to everybody I can. And the patient worked at Walmart, and the patient said, "You're forgetting something really big." I said, "What's that?" She said, "You have no idea how much those students come in here and spend. They buy microwaves and refrigerators for their dorm and so on." She said, "You bring in a class of 14 extra people, you have those students spending their expendable income in the city of Jacksonville, and that adds to sales tax revenue." Let's make a spreadsheet. Let's assume that, that we're going to get $67,200 more in our city coffers in terms of sales tax revenue over the course of this next year for this class, and that next year the promise has the same effect. So next year, that same class will presumably go on for another year of college, and we'll have another class that has another 14 students, and next year, the town's going to get $136,000 more in their coffers. And by 2022, just the effect of having more students in college locally, the town's going to get $281,000 more in their coffers. And the college, look at it from the colleges' standpoint, if they're going to get $300,000 more in tuition this year, they're going to have $600,000 more in tuition next year. And by the end, they're going to have over $1 million in extra tuition. And that'll kind of stabilize at that point because then kids will start to graduate and leave, so it's going to stay at 1.2 million, and it's going to go up only proportional to how much tuition increases each year. So... So starting in 2023, you're going to start to graduate students. So we need to add that to a spreadsheet if we're going to expand our spreadsheet out in terms of what happens to the town coffers. You're going to continue to have the same amount of students that are, that are in college and adding to the sales tax revenue by what the college is spending, with their spending of tuition. But you're also going to have people moving out, earning incomes, paying income tax, and spending part of that disposable income on sales tax. So, and, and I would calculate that, that, that that class of, of seven people that would stay locally, half of the 14 are going to stay locally, that that class of seven are going to add $44,590 in extra coffers and sales tax revenue. So we've come up with a spreadsheet that looks something like this. On the top line, we have revenue generated from the excess tuition that colleges are getting. On the second line, we have salary generating revenue. The spreadsheet starts in 2023. And the bottom is the total. And you can see that in 2023, we would expect an extra $300,000 to the city's coffers, and by 2039, we would get one and a half million dollars a year extra in the city's coffers from a promise program that's viable. And, and I'm just predicting that based on 14 students a year being added to the school population. It may be that when you fund a full-fledged promise, that it will go up even more than that. So when you fund a full-fledged promise, if you make college almost free for all the students here, you will find people moving into District 117 to qualify their family and their, and their students for college and the, and the benefit of that. And that's going to, by increasing the town population, it's going to increase property values, increase your tax base, and increase an economic engine that way. I would hope it would attract industry. Another big effect is that the school enrollment will increase, and the school district gets about $7,000 per student reimbursement from the state based on a census that's done once a year. And so every student that they get extra, it means a lot to their general revenue and their budget planning. Educational benefits. We noticed that, that we have a dropout rate from high school that is higher than the state. A full-fledged promise means that kids get interested in college as early as third grade. Kids in poverty-stricken families where their parents say, "You know, you shouldn't even think about college because there's no way that we're putting that money out. You will never afford that, so don't even think about it." They're not interested in academics. But if their parents change their tune, as early as third grade, you start to see academics approving. In Kalamazoo, they have measured and documented decreased truancy, decreased juvenile delinquency, increased college enrollment, increased graduation from high school, increased college completion. So I hope that I convinced you that this is an economic engine. It actually was a surprise to me that it was an economic engine this year. If I'm looking at this wrong, if my numbers are not making sense to you, I would love to have you challenge me because I'd love to make this presentation without any holes in it. And one thing I would say is that, is that this isn't going to work this way in most cities that have a promise. Most cities that have a promise do not have three colleges locally, and they don't make their promise contingent on the students staying locally. I actually didn't think that it was a great idea to demand that of students at the beginning. I thought that the promise ought to be modeled more after the Kalamazoo effect. But I will have to bow to the wisdom of the original promise committee in putting that in as a stipulation to try to prevent brain drain in this community and try to keep our educational level high here. So the, the way the promise is designed and the unique features of this town that really are one of its really strong features have given us a promise that has become an economic engine much earlier than would have been predicted. I'm very thankful of the fact that we have a very strong promise board and a bunch of strong promise committees. And I'm just going to flash through here, but you'll notice many names on these committees that are prominent citizens, and they just work like a son of a gun on all kinds of things we've had. And, and nobody takes a penny for any of their efforts in this. Every penny that's donated to the promise goes to a scholarship. We've had some overhead as, in terms of mailings and so on, and all of that has been covered by overhead grants from the Tracy Family Foundation. So... I think you all know Beverly Rogers and Gray Noel and Stephanie Chipman. And just look at that board. It's a terrific board. We have a lot of major donors this year. And we have a boatload of recipients this year. So... So that's it. Thanks very much for giving me your time, and I'd love to field some questions if I Everybody's convinced?
Yeah?
So believe the last time you came and made a presentation, one of the questions that I had and you weren't able to answer it yet, and I don't believe you'll be able to answer it this evening either, is that this year, 2019, will be your first graduating class, is that correct? Of the four years, four years? Because the question I had previously was, how many students that receive the promise actually stay at the institution from their freshman, because you only get the scholarship their first year? How many actually stay through to graduation?
So our first awardees are entering their junior year.
Okay.
Okay? So, so we won't be able to answer that question. We're trying to, yeah, Lynn?
I'm tracking it. I'm tracking it.
Yeah.
I'm contacting the students every year to see how they're doing, where they are, and what's going on. We're trying to track it.
Sure.
Because it's important.
There are a lot of metrics that we want to track, and we're too young in our organization to be able to do that. Obviously, we don't expect there to be a change in grades in, in third grade at this point yet, but we're going to try to track that. We'd certainly like to track things like truancy and, and behavior changes in high school and juvenile delinquency, all the things they're tracking in Kalamazoo. But it's, it's really way too early to have any of those metrics. So...
I know it's helpful to students, and obviously you have a nice group of students here tonight that I assume are recipients.
Yes.
So I'm sure they, they greatly appreciate the, the scholarship that they're receiving, and it is good for Jacksonville.
It is absolutely great for Jacksonville.
But I'm, I'm really excited to see, you know, what the statistics look like in, in two years. That's the part that I'm most looking forward to.
Sure. Absolutely.
Because a lot of the information that you provide is, you know, based on national averages or Illinois, but I'm really curious on, on what it's really going to look like in two years.
Right.
And how, and how many of these students that actually graduate are going to be able to land a fifty thousand dollar a year job in Jacksonville straight out? You know, so that, that's, that's exciting to me.
Well, you know, fifty thousand is, um... That's such a nebulous number because it encompasses all occupations. So, you know, that's, that's engineers and physicists and English majors and, you know, and it may be that because, Illinois College doesn't have an engineering department, it may be that the average starting salaries are lower because of the mix.
It's exciting, though, and we really appreciate the work that you and all of your volunteers have put forth on this, because, you know, it is, it is great for the colleges, for the students, for our community.
Yeah.
Thank you for sharing.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Dr. Scheep? Well, we thank you, Doctor, and thanks for everyone that came. You need to get out of here, right? You might got some homework. You're more than welcome to leave if you just were here for the conference.
Thank you.
But you can stay too.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome to keep these if you want to keep them, but I've got other places to hand them out if you don't.
Okay, committee reports tonight. Finance, IT, personnel, all of them.
Ah, I guess we're going to discuss the golf course finance.
Well, as you all know, I mean, every year, we put money into the golf course, and we try to have some, at the end of the year, we have shortages. It's come to a little bit earlier this year than normal. After speaking to the mayor and showing him some of the bills that we've got to pay from chemicals and things like that, and you've got three payrolls this month, you've got September, October, November, December payroll left to go. The mayor and I have discussed, and thought that we'd probably better have put a little more money into the, into the golf this year. I don't know that fifty thousand is going to cover it, but it should. We should be doing a little bit better during the fall with money coming in. We're barely going to have enough cover for the third payroll. I just found out that today we'll have to do that, but we've got about sixteen, I think sixteen thousand dollars in expenses right now that are sitting there, ready to be paid from bills that we received in July, August. So with that, after, like I said, after discussing with the mayor, showing him where we were, we felt like that we better put a little bit more money into it. And then when it comes time for the budget process with finance and chair, we'll start discussing on what to do for, for next year and years to come. But that's where we are. We do this, we do this each year for only about ten thousand, but it's come to a...
Do we usually do this later in the year?
Pardon, sir.
Isn't this usually later in the year?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's usually about November when we put up ten thousand dollars and we use two or three of it. But right now, we've used the whole fifty thousand that we set aside, and with four months left to go in the year, we're probably going to need at least half of that fifty, maybe a little bit more.
Do we have some separate expenditures that we weren't accounting for?
No, I don't think so, Laura. Mostly, from what I looked at, expenditures are down below what, what they anticipated. Unfortunately, so is revenue. Golf is taking a pretty good hit all across the nation, not just here.
Wasn't there a committee or a group that was looking at golf course?
We haven't heard anything more out of them, other than they're doing a few things, but nothing's been brought to us.
The last time I met, it's been a while. It's been a while. They made suggestions, and I think a lot of it was followed up. And, you know, when season passes or down and plays down, it's just one of those things. And it's like, we've talked internally, Skip and I, we do this every year. And during the budget process with, we'll talk with Don, maybe treating golf course just like parks and lakes, and not having separate, rolling it all together, so we don't have to come to council every year and ask for more money. That we just have a one big budget, and we absorb it. That's just a thought.
But if it's a dying sport, why would you continue to keep it open?
It's not a, it's, I don't believe that it's a dying sport.
Oh, it very much is. If you read all the research that's out there.
Play is down, but if you don't have it...
Millennials, they're just, I mean, we have other things like disc golf, and we have a lot of other sports that we're interested in. I mean, baseball stadiums are just as guilty. They're dying sport, and they take money from the community if you keep them open.
Or there's fewer rich people that can afford to.
Well, there's that too, but if you'd say not make a profit, do we make a profit off the pool?
Right, but that's something that is a family...
The golf can be too.
Right. Not really. You'd see many families going on the golf course.
It's all recreation.
Yeah, it's recreation. There are plenty of families out there. Golf's been through cycles since I've started playing when I was a kid. There was times where it was so busy you couldn't get on, and then there's, it's up and down, up and down. It's... And overall, statistics show that it's dying.
Well, I'm glad that the committee's going to be looking at it and considering that for, for next year and...
I think it's something that we seriously need to look at.
Any question, more questions from the alums?
The only thing I got to say is, I drove up to Canton over the weekend and I'm driving by that, that golf course on the north side of that road up in Weems.
Done.
Driving by there for years and years, and I just couldn't survive any longer.
Yeah.
I don't want to see that.
Okay, committee reports, utility, Alvin and Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have three items tonight. Number one, discuss proposal for purchase insulation of clarifier scum removal assembly for wastewater treatment plant, and that kind of sounds like what it is in the...
Yeah. Yeah. The problem with the, this mechanism is the mechanical parts inside the final clarifier tank is made by a specific manufacturer, so you can't go out and get four or five bids. This is the only one that fits that particular thing, so... But this cost includes them carrying the old out, putting the new in, and that's the cost of the new, so it's a pretty big price. Comes out of the project's fund. So we'll do another one next year, because we have two final clarifiers. Any questions?
What was the charging cost?
Forty-three thousand, five hundred dollars.
Number two, discuss quote for purchase of a non-podable booster strainer for waste treatment plant.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll kind of put that in with the non-podable pump, because it's part of it. The non-podable pump at the sewer plant runs twenty-four, seven, and it's been running twenty-nine years. What we do is, we take the finished wastewater right before it goes to the creek, and we recycle it to cool the packing and the pumps, and we circulate it all the way through the sewer plant. And then we have hoses that we hose down tanks and floors with, so we're not using city water. Millions of gallons of water here, city water, and we don't have to. So this pump takes it and recycles it, but it's in dire need of replacement. Like I said, it runs twenty-four, sevens, because the pumps are always pumping the sewer plant, and they always need cooling. So I got, we finally got two proposals. The third one, we didn't like because we found out that these guys just sell them, and they don't care if they ever come and company with them. But the one from Van Vetter for fifty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-three, is the one that we wanted to go with. It's the lowest bid, and Van Vetter out of St. Louis, we have all of our lift stations are maintained by them. We've got all of our equipment, so they're a good company. And plus, other than the second bid, they're going to come and take the equipment apart and put it down in the pit, because you can't put it in there in one piece. So that's a huge cost savings in labor. And then the strainer, uh... That goes in front of the non-pod pump. The, they got two, we've cut three different bids, and one, the highest one, well, we had twenty-four thousand, and then the other one was thirty-five thousand. The one we wanted to go with is fifteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars. It's made out of stainless steel. It's a little bit better stainless steel than the regular grade, so it'll last a whole lot longer. And it's fifteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars, and it goes right in front of the non-pod pump. So the one we got's been twenty-nine years, so we're going to get our money back in return. Any questions on that? That comes out of the project's fund too. Thanks, Dan. You're better. Any public comment this time?
Real quick, you guys, is this the same company doing all this?
No.
Who's, Xylem?
Yeah. They, Xylem is the manufacturer of the non-pod pump, the Van Veters, the cells. Well, we'll adjourn this meeting and go on the bigger issues.